Good evening, everybody. We wanted to do a work session update again on FMP 2.0 progress, just to kind of give an outline, I think, for the topics that we'll want to cover this evening and then where we go from these work sessions. I would say first we'll discuss with you the middle school progress and some of the progress we're making around that and that design work and engaging those teams. And so Dwayne and Nick will talk to you about that work. And then we also want to provide a brief update around preschool and our work to get an RFP out and where some of those sites that are listed in the RFP will be. And so you have a little bit more information on that. And then the last thing is the timeline. And we really wanted you guys to have a chance to see that timeline one more time and then to also have a board approval of that timeline. We did lose an opportunity to meet with some of our staff yesterday that would have allowed us to hopefully have this approved on the 22nd. So we may end the conversation with just a brief check-in with you guys about if we could wait till potentially the first April meeting to do that so we can meet with some teams to make sure they understand what's in the timeline before we put it on a public agenda and ask for your approval of that. So just keep that in the back of your mind, too. We'd originally slot it for the 22nd, but now with losing those meetings we had all lined up yesterday, it might make sense to wait till that first meeting in April. So with that, I think we'll go back to the beginning there around the middle school conversation and turn it over to Dwayne and Nick and let them kind of recap some of the work that's been going on with that.
Okay, thanks. Well, Nick and I met with the three junior high principals and the architectural design teams for those schools. Jeff Barnes was there as well. And we had a two-hour discussion and it was, it was, sometimes you wonder if two hours is too long, but two hours was just enough. We really, we covered a lot of territory. I had done before the meeting a kind of a layout of all the square footages of all the rooms and all the buildings. So I knew how big the art rooms were, the music rooms were, and all that. I had that all pretty well detailed as part of that template. For those of you who've been around a while, you've seen it. And then I compared that to what a normal template would be for a school of 1,200 children and some of the deficiencies, some of the pluses and the minuses, and we went through all that. And then we talked about program, then we got into programs and how those programs are taught and how they might be taught at the sixth grade level and all that. Nick can expand on that, but from my perspective, it was, we talked about each individual building with the architects there so they got to hear and take notes. And I already got some notes back ready from one of the firms today on two of the buildings. So they heard us and I think it was a really productive two hours on two, so you want to jump in there a little bit?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we spent time on is, as you can imagine, we don't have all the answers figured out what we want to do from a teaching and learning perspective by any means. So we wanted to make sure, though, that the spaces would be, you know, have some flexibility or we weren't limiting ourselves. Dwayne did a really nice job of kind of looking at what a 1,200 student school would need and then, okay, do we need a second art room? Well, likely. Do we need, what do we need from CTE perspectives? That way, we didn't want the building limiting then later teaching and learning conversations. So we were able to look through some of those things, looking at, you know, fitness space. So if we wanted to offer some different things related to, you know, EE offerings and different things of that nature. And we had a really nice conversation about some of the classrooms just having a little, maybe, flexibility. Because when you think about a science classroom for a sixth grader is vastly different than a science classroom for like a chemistry in our high schools. It doesn't need to be the same thing, but it needs some things in it, maybe some things more, maybe some more outlets or space for some bigger tables. So we got into some conversations there where space might be of the science room, but it also could serve as a CTE space or could serve as something else, or it could just be a classroom or whatever it might be. So we talked through some of those pieces because we're still in, have a work in progress in regards to, you know, what we'd like to see offered sixth through eighth grade.
And I would add to that, that I don't, I didn't want the schools to feel like, we're going to build this many classrooms and this is your budget, this is what you get. Because some of the schools have a surplus of rooms, some don't. Some feel like they need, they had different requests for their deficiencies in their buildings. So we were able to talk through those deficiencies and then structure, what we gave the architect was, this is our overall compromise, your budget. But if it means that we have to add a little here and take a little away from here and make the school work better for the, for the school and the efficiency of the school, then by all means, let's do it. This is the time to do it, to make them right, so.
I don't know what else to add.
Yeah, and I think, well, we got good, good feedback on how they teach those classes. How about the teen concept?
Well, yeah, I mean, we went into different conversations. A lot of it, we didn't want to get too far down the road because we haven't had all the dialogues of, you know, how we might organize the students, what we want that to look like. So we wanted to have some flexibility still. So that was probably the most critical piece is how can we maintain, because it's a unique challenge of, hey, we got to get going on this so that way the project's going to get done on time while we're having these conversations. So we need to just kind of work hand in hand on that and leave us with a little bit of flexibility to make it work.
Yep. Who missed anything, Jeff?
Thanks, I'm Jeff.
Any questions, Dwight?
During the lead-up to these considerations, I remember hearing from students in interest in outside classrooms. That may have come from high school paid students more than junior high. So are outside classrooms a possibility to put into their overall planning here?
Absolutely. I don't, I think if you're doing it on the, in the planning stages and you can plan a courtyard for a classroom or something and build that in, it's easy to do now, easier now than later. So not unlike at Liberty, you know, when we filled in that courtyard, we created an outdoor classroom space. We're talking about creating courtyards at Southeast and at North Central and so there's a great opportunity to do that.
And that was actually brought up, too?
Yeah, we talked about outdoor spaces a couple of different times. Also, just sixth grade currently, that looks, in an elementary school, that looks different with recess and different things that, you know, how can kids get outside and have opportunities to move? Because we talked about the common spaces as well. You know, our current common spaces probably aren't, you know, adequate for the number of kids that would be in there for lunch or whatever it might be. So we looked at those things, too.
Frank?
I suppose when you build the outdoor classroom space, it could be used for lots of different things.
Yes.
Be really versatile, just give folks a place to sit and infrastructure.
One thing that kind of surprised me, though, was they didn't feel a real need to have a student commons area like we have at, at Liberty. But they just, we've got that kind of pushback. They, you know, the cafeterias can, can work in that function, especially at North Central. I mean, they come in, they have what they call a student commons right above the front entrance that never gets used. So it was, it was an interesting discussion there. They'd rather see those funds spent elsewhere in the building than create a big space they may not need. You know, the cafeteria slash multipurpose rooms really serve that function and do you get that impression?
Well, they had talked about making those spaces more defined. And I think it's part just the age group of the kids. You know, a high schooler with a common space and an open period might use that differently than a junior high student who we just don't want, we want them to go to the next, we don't, they were talking about not wanting places where they could just hang out. We want to get them to their next. We want to get you to your next class. We want to get you to your next.
Junior high kids don't have open periods?
No, but if they have to pass from one point to another, we don't need any distractions along the way.
They might choose to.
Yeah, they might become an open period. So we need to make sure we're finding ways, just again, from point A to point B, quickly.
Did you guys talk about any tours of other places? I know that had come up early in the conversation, then I didn't really follow up and ask you guys that about if there was any of that or, I know we've been moving pretty fast, but is there anywhere they wanted to go look or?
Well, they shared, I know one of the architects shared some unique design things that they've done in some other facilities. So we were kind of just seeing what, what that looked like. So he brought a number of pictures of different things for us and looked at what those could look like. So I think there was some interest, but we didn't get into the specifics of going to visit those locations.
Yeah, one idea, for example, was, you know, North Central kind of has a curb in the building, but if you add on addition, maybe you, you create some curves in the corridors and expand the corridors in certain places to make those pull-out areas or, you know, groups can do some collaboration or whatever, some concepts like that. They brought some ideas that way. I don't think we really got into any other schools.
Yeah, and more when we talked about, or the principals expressed some desire for some tours was really around more of that teaching and learning aspect, too, and what folks were doing that way. And we know it's hard to separate one from the other as we're doing this design work, but I know they had some interest in that, just looking at how those middle school concepts work and who's been doing it effectively in that.
It does remind me of your question about why there are parts we did talk about was, you know, additional admin space or additional teacher workroom space or areas where teachers that are at one end of the building wouldn't have to go to the front office to do copy work. And so I use the example of Liberty High School. At Liberty High School, at each corner, remember on those intersections on the corner of the building, we created teacher workrooms and spaces for them to have small meetings or whatever. And they liked that idea. That way you can do a small admin office because you may have some classes that are pretty good distance away from the front office, so. Yeah, I think they kind of liked that. We encourage them to go to Liberty if they hadn't been there lately, they took the whole some rooms.
And then Knightsville West has those classrooms that have small spaces in between the classroom for that.
Yep.
And I'd say Liberty's get used a lot for smaller construction, you know, pull-out and, you know, they, it's probably used less frequently for adult, you know, or staff meetings and a lot more frequently, which is great. I mean, it's just a nice space where you can take students who need to be allowed for a test or maybe some additional intervention work, you know. Three, four kids or?
Yeah, three or four kids.
Well, we had some nice, that makes me think, we had some nice conversations about creative use or creative thoughts related to some of the special education classrooms, not trying to just have like this space like, hey, you're going off to the little room over here, but what could it look like that has a greater community? Southeast had been in some conversations related to that previous to these, just because of the other remodels that were going on or so. That was a nice conversation, just to hear what their thinking was, what that could look like, how they could create some different community or not have it feel so uncomfortable maybe for a kid. So that was something that I thought was an encouraging part of the conversation. Don't know what it would look like in fruition, but I thought it was good that we were thinking through that.
So where are we at in terms of inferring with sixth grade teachers and existing seventh grade teachers in the process?
Well, we're working, so do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, you're fine.
I'm sorry, am I getting ahead of you here?
Well, that was going to be my answer a little bit, is I think that's a little farther down the road yet, Charlie, as far as engaging the teachers. So a lot of this has been the pre-work with the administrators on the design and I think that's what Nick and I would have talked about. So then, yeah, eventually we'll have to get into those conversations with logistical and the teach and learning aspect about how to do the model. Yep.
We are, I would say, though, I mean, we've met with all the coordinators and we're kind of in the process of, we've met a whole group of coordinators. We're working on smaller, kind of one-on-one discussions. I've met with our elementary and our secondary map coordinators today and we're talking about, well, what would, what could sixth through, so we're having some of those conversations. I think we're just trying to make sure when we get these larger groups together, we can have a little bit of focus to that conversation. So it's not just this wide open, like, hey, what do we want it to look like? Like, here's some things that we think are priorities, we're middle-level education and how can we best manage that?
Are we going to have, after the architects have done some of the very planning, how sure are the architects actually, how they view this process?
Well, they always, they always do what we call programming, okay? And programming is like, you know, what size spaces, how many, you know, those types of issues. So this helped them immensely, just listened to the discussion about the programming space that we need to do. And that's just part of their typical course of responsibility. So I think it really helped accelerate the project, get them started. And right now what they're doing is developing schematic drawings about how it could lay out and some of the potential changes to the building. Those schematics we always bring to the board and do a presentation. So you'll get to see the two or three ideas for each school. And we'll, we, they, sometimes they'll come back with five or six, you know, we'll let the staff at the school help kind of wheel them down a little bit and then we'll bring them to you. And I would expect that to be done May, June, at the latest, hopefully May, because then we'll come back with a more detailed design development and ultimate construction. The goal is still to get them off their bid late October, early November, so we can be our supply chain, which we'll come back to in a little bit.
Do you want me to actually have a voice in the physical layout?
Who, you? You asked me?
I'm sorry, Charlie, to hear you. I said, if you want me to have a voice in the physical layout of these projects?
You always have.
Well, I can't do it myself. I've been a minute where you brought up suggestions, but strategic perhaps.
Oh, yeah.
A lot more voice.
Yeah, I think that's the general process, right? That Dwayne works with the staff, the physical plant team works with the staff. They group up and, and talk with the architects and present then a design that really has had a lot of staff input into it and then that's what's presented to you guys, right? And so, of course, we want you to see it before you're approving that work to go ahead and keeping you informed along the way. Other questions about middle schools?
I thought Nick and I made a pretty good one-two team.
All right. Good job.
Yeah, we'll see.
So the preschool one's probably a little bit more brief, but we are moving forward with those two pilot sites. We put out an RFP for the wrap care and the two sites are Schick, I was going to combine the two, Wickham and Shimick are the two sites that we'll be looking at about starting that full-day wrap care program in a pilot opportunity next year. When we get the RFP back, then we'll really have a good indicator about if this is something we will have a community partner that can provide that wrap service or if that's something the district's going to have to look at doing internally then. So you probably know or have seen that we've delayed preschool registration to this point and typically that's already started. So we're kind of looking at an early April registration time period for that. Lisa and I talked a little bit about a date this morning, but we didn't want to solidify one here yet tonight because she was still working with her team. But we will get that back here at the end of March and we should be able to quickly then start registration soon after that because it'll give us a good indication about which path we'll be choosing, either to move forward with one of the RFPs that we got or to prepare to stand up that service ourselves. So that's kind of the update since the last time we had a chance to talk about preschool. Any questions there?
I imagine the big question is just enrollment.
Yep, exactly. Yep, just trying to get the enrollment and I know that's been a little bit of the, you know, concern about delaying the regi, and I shouldn't say concern, I don't think we're necessarily concerned about it, but we also don't want to wait too long, right? We want people to know those options and to be able to start telling them when preschool registration will happen, even if it's a little bit behind from when it's usually occurred.
Are we going to be able to have parents' authority come forward to kind of do this?
Right, and that's part of what's in the RFP or if we don't have a provider, remember, that would do that, Charlie, then that's the system we would create where we'd work through that sliding scale for folks. And so I think that's a necessary part. Now, the two campuses we're looking at, you know, we tried to be pretty transparent with you guys. That wouldn't be our most diverse group that we'd start those on, but that allows us to get the funding formula in place before we would be serving families that would really need to have that. Because the last thing we want to do is create a model where we'd have to pull back on any families, especially if it was a very diverse demographic group. So that's the goal, right? I mean, really, the goal is trying to serve all of our kids and folks that haven't had access to a half-day program. So that's the end goal and then we need to make sure that we're conscientious as we go through about figuring out the pilot and making it sure it can be a successful one to be expanded. All right, then we'll pivot to the timeline, which we got up on the screen there for you and is loaded into Board Docs as well.
Did you want me to get kind of this, Chase, or just pivot?
Go for it.
So you remember about the Facility Master Plan 1.0 and over that nine-year period because we started in the fall of 2012 when we gathered, by the spring of 2013, we had a pretty good plan. 2014, we were building Alexander. It went pretty quick, okay? The thing about that plan was, we revised it at least three times, if I recall, with that nine-year period. Part of the major change was, we compressed it. We accelerated it. Remember, we knocked two years off and we got everything done fast because we could, we had the resources and we accomplished, what we accomplished was additional scope and reduced costs. We were able, you know, to get interest rates at a favorable rate and offset future inflation. There's a lot of things that were beneficial to the district, okay? But it's possible we could do the same thing here. But what I want to say to you is, back in Facility Master Plan 1.0, we had a lot of growth. I mean, it was accelerated. It was just boom, boom, boom. And we were doing all we could to keep up with those schools, to create the classrooms we needed for our kids, right? Well, over the last couple of years, I'm sure the pandemics had something to do with it, that growth has really leveled off, not flat. And we're not having the same growth that we had. So the advantage of these, of this is that we're going to be proactive. If, if we know that growth's coming, we're going to have plans in place where we can go build these schools and get them built and stay ahead of it and not have to fight it the way we did. Because we were constantly fighting it. I thought one summer, you know, I was going to kill my entire physical plant staff because I don't know how many schools we moved, but it was, it was, it was a chore and something I won't forget and I'm sure they won't. But anyway, so the advantage of this is I, I think it's prudent to lay out these buildings, to lay out one elementary school per year or every two years in the plan. And we'll be able, if growth is normal, we'll be good. If growth is flat, nothing says you can't take the timeline, push it out. You don't have to build it just because it's on the plan. And it's a concept I want out there because I know there are a lot of principals and schools that say, hey, you guaranteed here we're going to build this because, well, okay, but it doesn't warrant building that school at this time. So you may, you know, the board lets make some decision, maybe to push that timeline out, too. You know, let it grow like that or compress it if we have to, okay? So there's a couple of schools on here, the only, and we have this discussion, the only school, the elementary school that's on here that was kind of like a promise was Hills, okay? We'll come back to that. But I've got a new school planned for North Liberty. I've got one planned for Southwest out there off of Rare Road. I've got one planned for North Correville, which is really right across the road from the high school. That's Correville and that's the north part of Correville, okay? And then we've stuck one in there for the Southeast side. Well, I think the Southeast one will be the last one that needs to be built. I think North Liberty may be the first one that needs to be built because there's some developments going up there already that may fill that. And in between then Southwest, which is dependent upon the city sewer line going underneath 380, no reason to start until it's there because that'll drive the development. And then somewhere near is Correville, North Correville. So I've got them laid out, but do you have to build them in that order? No, we can move them around, but I think we go ahead and start our planning for North Liberty, you know, in the next year or so, we'll start that planning, we'll start at Hills and just kind of move down the road and push them back if we need to. That's, but a lot of what you know is, you know, we compressed before, this time we may have to do this, we have to expand it. Now, having said that, the first Facility Master Plan was 350 million. By the time we added all the devil projects, we did over $400 million worth of work. We did almost 449 in that nine-year period. This plan is only at the most 270, okay? It's not as, not as, it's not as robust as the first plan. Will it take 10 years? Certainly can take 10 years. Can we do it in seven? I think so. Okay? So I'm going to kind of lay it out so that, you may see it both ways, I don't know. I'm not, this is a draft, okay? It's a working document. Matt and Chase indicated you wanted to see a more finalized version so you could act on it, which I'm willing to do. We do need to meet with the three high school principals and their ADs next week or the end of March. So that would be helpful, have that discussion first. So I would chime in with Matt, so that, that would be smart. And bringing a plan based on projected cash flow is what this is based on. You know, you heard me talk about the 30 million a year. Yeah, we could go 30, 32, 35, we're pushing it. But if you go with that, you're exceeding the capacity of the school staff and the school district to keep up and the moves that have to be made, things like that. So based on that, 30 million, you know, we're looking at, this plan is seven or eight years, you know? 10, 10 will work. 10 will be nice, leisurely plan if that works out, not a problem. But I just want you to keep that in your thought process about how this plan might like an accordion, you know, one way or the other.
I think it's, I think that those of us who went through the first round, because it was through a bond, we didn't have flexibility. There was an extra layer of stress about it. And so this is nice to know. Like you said, it's nice to have in our heads that there's flexibility because we will need it, also because we can have it. I mean, legally, we can have this kind of flexibility. There's just so much, it makes a big difference.
Some of the, some of the limits on the bond were, when you borrow, certainly, Lance can jump in here, you have two years to spend it. When you, when you borrow a bond against it, you've got two years to expend it. So you need, that's one of the reasons we accelerated that plan, too, is to keep up with all that. And we had some favorable rates. With sales tax, it's good till what, 2050?
Yeah, that takes a lot of stress off, a little lot.
Yeah.
I won't be here in 2050. It'll be 100 years old. But it, it, it is nice having that flexibility.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing I'd add to that, before Dwayne kind of goes into the specific project, as we talked about this and you talked about the accordion and how we could stretch it or condense it, is the way we think about it, we're in a much different spot than we were 12 years ago. Our, our facilities weren't the state we wanted them to be and we were chasing enrollment, right? We've had this huge conversation about all of the temporaries that we have all over the district. And so you think about it from a different direction of what Dwayne is saying is that by the time we get two or three years in this plan, if we do, you know, we move into the middle school concepts and after we open that first elementary school, we're going to be keeping pace with our projected growth. And so to have the pieces of land, to be able to keep up with that, it's a different spot than we've ever been in the district because we've just been trying to keep up with where we are. And so through the hard work of FMP 1.0 and now getting FMP 2 off the ground, we have a roadmap that, Mark, as you said, we have the flexibility of choosing where it goes and just because of how far behind we were, we never really had that flexibility. So it's, it's a, it's a great thing, like it's a celebration just from an aspect of now we know where we need to be from a facility standpoint to meet, to meet our student footprint that we have in the district right now.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the things that what I'm hearing is that why we have to be mindful is every time we open a new building, we're going to pay for the construction costs through these, but the staffing of that building, of course, is going to come from our general fund. And so in theory, if we're moving students, we're moving teachers, but every school has to have a principal, every school has to have a nurse and a new art teacher. And so there, we are going to have costs from our general fund to, associated with every new building that we open and we need to make sure that we can cover those costs in the general fund so that we're not getting ahead of ourselves there, right?
Right. And I think the intersection we still have to have also is the enrollment projections, right, that you guys approved, that Adam's out working on. And so Dwayne kind of gave you some indicators about things that feel like they're coming at us, but that'll also provide some hard data around that to know, okay, to Lisa's point about if we can look at that, here's the timeline, we're thinking, what does our budget tell us about the timeline, do we should implement that? And then what does the actual growth look like and do we have it in the right place on there? So I do think while it's approved, we also need to keep some, some space for our own flexibility to be able to adjust to those variables.
So if you look at this, one man, Chase, a little clearer, I guess, but the first group of projects at the top of the page, those are those keep the promise ones. You know, Correl Central, it's, it's that front entrance, making it a little bit better. At Correville Central, we're in an elevator because they don't have an elevator in that one wing, the newer, what I'd call the newer wing, the 50s wing, doesn't have an elevator. So we need to make it more accessible. So that's just two things we need to get done. At Garner, you know, up there in North Liberty and General, the Garner and Van Allen, I felt like the lunchrooms were undersized. So we need to expand those lunchrooms so that we're not relying on the gymnasium for flow over lunches and things like that. And then push those forward, which puts pressure on the admin wings. So at Garner, we're going to push to the west and at Van Allen, we're going to push to the south to create additional room in those, those cafeterias, which I felt were undersized at the time. Maybe it was a limit on the money, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't here, or it's just the style of that particular architect. But anyway, those need to be improved. And at Shimick, you know, we, we got the gymnasium added on to that building, but now we, we we, we need to do the multipurpose room, the lunchroom, and so that's being designed as we speak, and they're making some progress there. At Weber Elementary, that was the one, uh, elementary school that did not get a front entrance, a secured entrance. If you go to Wickham, if you've been there, Weber looked just like Wickham, basically. And we have to re, it's the same floor plan, we have to redo that front entrance. At the same time, you have to redo the office, so that you direct traffic flow through the office and maintain that model that we've got at all the other schools. At Wickham, we're gonna build a gym, they have an undersized gym. Would add back at Weber, not that, we did, at Weber, we added six general ed classrooms, two preschool rooms, and a gym. We did a lot of work at Weber, we just didn't get that front entrance done, so that's why we need to go back. Wickham is the gymnasium. Then, I'm looking at an old drawing. Okay, I'll make sure I'm talking off the same page. I've revised this through four times, I gotta make sure I got the where you went for them. But then you've got, then you've got North Central, you know, and North, there were some parking issues there that need to be resolved. Northwest was a kitchen, we, we expanded the cafeteria. They had, they actually had two cafeterias at Northwest. They had one on the first floor in the multipurpose room, and the second one on the second floor in the cafeteria, it was, they were both just totally not workable for the staff. So we improved the cafeteria, but we didn't get the kitchen done, so we're gonna redo the kitchen at Northwest. And now that we're adding six quarters, we may look at expanding the cafeteria again, we'll see. So that, that was part of the discussion that we had last week. And Southeast Junior High, there was three things we didn't get done. We didn't get the kitchen redone, the cafeteria doesn't exist today, it's undersized, and we didn't get the band area done, okay? So now at Southeast, they've seen what, they've seen what we've done at North Central, and what we've done at Northwest. If you've been in the band music area at Northwest, it's delightful, it's one where I could use, I mean, it's really well done. And so we need to do that at Southeast. And the cafeteria plans at Southeast, the way they're developing, if you're familiar with Southeast, there was a courtyard, and in that courtyard, we actually put a new media center on the upper level, beautiful media center. And we added some family consumer science and some general ed classrooms underneath of it. But there's still room in the, in that courtyard to push the cafeteria out into the courtyard, and actually move the wall out, create a corridor, create some seating areas for, for benches for students that wanna sit at a countertop and plug in their laptops or whatever. They'll have that area, and then, and we're gonna take the stage out of that room, we're gonna make that cafeteria bigger. The corridor that used to be between the cafeteria and the kitchen's gonna become the serving line, and then we're gonna add on to the kitchen, it'll look totally different. Allison's working on plans to feed those kids out at City High until we get, while we're doing some of that construction, so eventually we'll have to make some combinations there, but. So that's, that's the look at, at Southeast. Again, completing the promise we said, uh, North Central, their cafeteria's been expanded, their kitchen's been expanded, but it needs to be expanded again. So we'll probably do a little bit of that at North Central, make sure it works. Let's see. City High, part of the promise, we didn't finish what we call the ceiling. And it may not be any of you, but if you, if you're looking at City High, it's the far northeast corner of the building. It's the corner of the building that, on the backside of it's where the batting cage is and the practice field is, is that wing there? It's not particularly beautiful, okay? It doesn't really fit with the front of the building, but we didn't get it done. We need to do the heating and air conditioning there. We need to do the heating and air conditioning in the auditorium because it's lived its useful life. We need to do some, some finishes there and make that a more, more in tune with the rest of the building in terms of finishes. So that's at City High. At West High School, we need to redo the front entrance, make that a secured entrance. They want a student commons, right now they kinda hang out in the gym and the cafeteria in the hallway, and they don't have that defined areas, we're gonna add that at West High, we hope. And, and at the same time, doing some admin work, there's some spaces for them to improve, counseling center, those kind of things. And at West High, if you can visualize that cursed stairway that goes up, I'm not saying this is how it's gonna end up, but it could very well end up being inside of the new addition. And you'll come in on the ground level, and then you'll have this grand staircase going up to the second floor, main floor. May or may not happen, but it's an idea that seems to, everybody seems to like. So that's something we might do at West High. At West High, we're also gonna improve the heating and cooling in the auditorium. And the music room, they have a beautiful band area, defined arts, it was just built like in 2010, 29, something like that, for my time. It's, it's huge, they have two large band rooms. We're thinking about taking the music room, existing music and orchestra, converting it into music, and moving orchestra back into the smaller of the two band rooms in the back to take better use of the space, it sits empty a lot of the time. So it's kinda repurposed and space there, make everything better. The only person that might object, might be the band teacher, but they'll be fine, they still have a big room, okay? So that's at West High, then we're down to Hills.
Wait, sorry, did I, we skipped over the City High one about the Hoover demo?
Oh, that's of particular interest to you, isn't it?
It sure is. And everyone, everyone who lives anywhere near there.
I'm sorry, that means too.
It's okay, just, I just wanna hear it, I just wanna hear the word.
You wanna hear it one more time?
Yes.
Okay, so the plan, and the designers are working on it as we speak. And we met with City High staff a couple weeks ago, Jeff and I did, to review the plan. They're pretty much on board with it. So if you can visualize Hoover, the Hoover building is a retaining wall, so to speak. It holds back the earth that's above it on that parking lot, right? So it drops down right there. So we're gonna tear Hoover down, we're gonna pull the parking lot towards First Street, so it's expanded parking, because one of the things they want at City High is more parking. So we're probably gonna double the size of the park in there, close to it. And then build a nice retaining wall with terrorists, so it has levels, and then a tennis court. And those terrorists will act as seating for people that wanna watch the tennis. So they'll actually have a look down onto the new tennis courts. You know, we're gonna build six, eight?
Are you doing eight?
Eight, eight new tennis courts. We did eight at West, we did eight at Liberty, and they'll fit. We have to squeeze it in between our, these huge geothermal wells that we have out there that go down to the aquifer, we can't mess with those, you know, they're very expensive, you know, a million dollars a pump. So we've, we've. We've got the tennis courts between the retaining, here's, here's the parking lot, here's the retaining walls, the new tennis courts, and then the well fields, and then court at, or First Street, excuse me, I'm sorry. So, I like to talk with my hands, it's another story, which you'll appreciate, I'll tell you later.
We have, we have a board meeting.
Anyway, so that's what's gonna go on there, and then they'll, they'll also have space for a practice field there.
That's what, that's what I was wondering, okay, practice field for anything, what are we talking?
They can use it for soccer, they can use it for football.
Just wondering, okay.
And they talked about the possibility of moving the shop, putting discus down there and, and increasing the, the space up above. And the other thing we're talking about, long-term, a little bit longer term, but not right away, would be to improve the softball field.
Yeah, so baseball's gonna stay over at Mercer?
For now.
And, and that's fine, I'm just trying, because I get a lot of questions about it, as you can imagine.
Yeah.
All right, just get that done, it, you know, get that building out of there. It wants everybody, get it out of there.
So, the burden's gonna be on the district is where to put the online program, so that's another discussion.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that, that's another day.
They're the only ones that are in there that need to go somewhere else.
We've already started thinking through that, so.
Just looking at an open enrollment, you know, that's, that's.
Okay, so you want me to slow it or keep going? So, okay, so the next, next group of projects are, because of her job.
Okay. Hills?
Excuse me, where, where?
Hills.
Oh, Hills. Yeah, I got it down. We got, we got Hills, which I know you wanna have a discussion about, we have a discussion right now, if you ask me how, how it's gonna get done, is that, and I know this is the bone that some of you may wanna talk about, is the best place for the new Hills is where the old Hill sits. And it's hard to build a building, a new one on top of an old one, particularly when you need to tear the old one down. Now, are there other ways to do it? Yes, we had discussions about other ways to do it? Yes, but in the end, I think that's probably the best place to put it, is right where it's at. There's a lot of overhead factors, you know, the city, the hills, athletics, we talked about flipping, we talked about all kinds of things. That parking lot, that parking lot at the city path right there, just run it out to Hills Bank, and that's where all our employees park, and I don't know how we would make that fit into the equation, okay? So, I mean, there are a lot of issues there, but for now. The city has told us they'd be interested in letting us use the area where the softball field is, which we can improve our green space, but the new building really needs to go where the old one sits. And I told the council that a month or so ago. So, we saw time to talk, and you have time to ask questions, but it's really gonna get tough to pull it off if we do put anything much different. Now, that means you gotta find a place to put your students, okay? And that's not always easy, but we can talk about those options as well. So, I can stop there.
We're gonna negotiate this with the Hills Council and leadership.
Well, we've tried. They promised us that they would be willing to do whatever it took if we got them a new building. So that means that board needs to sit back down with them and remind them of their promise for our promise. I think that's a conversation we have to have.
Yeah, 'cause the options about where to serve the kids aren't super appealing, right? I think that's the, the thing we're saying about, okay, if you're gonna build a new school where the old one is, well, that means there is no school for a period of time, right? And so then, where are those students served, and, and that's where the difficulty comes. And so I think that's what we wanna probably talk about and involve some next steps to see if there are better options. I think Dwayne is also sharing that the more we continue to look at this, we're not so sure that that's a bad option, but it still does create this idea, where, where do we serve those students for that period of time, and how do we address and work with those families through that, right? Because if that's on another campus for a while, then, then that's tough.
Do we do it at Lemmy, or what was the school?
We've had transitional schools before, um, where we've worked on that, so.
Lincoln went to Hoover.
I mean, the temporaries that we set up, wasn't that, where was that?
Temporary was at Lucas?
Lucas.
Where we moved a large segment out, yeah.
That temporary was amazing, I hope people realize.
But ten and a six are.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Because I mean, if they have rec fields out there, we might need to talk with them about using, I mean, they're getting a brand new building that we're paying for.
The real issue at Hills is if, we had a 10plex and a 6plex at Lucas, were great. I don't know where I put them at Hills. It's a really small site.
Okay.
And it's, you know, access to it, sewer and water while we're building, demolition, it would be a tough call.
How many kids go to school there?
It's, it's one of our smaller campuses, so I, I don't have the, the number right up in front, but I guess it's around the 300 range.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, that's something.
Closer to 200?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna first say 200, and then I gave myself a little cover.
I'm only asking because I'm thinking about what alternate facility may work.
Well, and the distance is gonna be the difference here, right? So we might've had transitional schoolhouses for folks before, but now you're talking about a transport from Hills, now not all of those kids are currently in Hills, right? That, that are attending Hills, we're bussing some of those from potentially closer to Iowa City, so, so I don't think we're ready to have that full conversation tonight, but we're trying to give you enough background to know there's, there's a few problems with that situation, right? And so we've tried to work through those problems, and, and we can present what some solutions would look like, or if you guys want to come back with another conversation on that, but I do, that's one we've persisted on throughout. I mean, we, we've had a lot of communication with Hills as we've gone along with this.
Not only Hills, but Stetsons too, the neighborhood.
For the land issue, yeah.
So I've had, I've got seven or eight different options for that site, we just kinda keep coming back.
I think, I think for the board though, every time we get new board members, you know, that Hills, it's a complicated school to understand, and when you're talking about transportation, you know, I just immediately picture our, our map, and we're putting people down there more than there's some people up here, so, yeah, I'm just, these facts to me are, I need to be really laid out for us to talk about those, you know what I'm saying? And I know more about it than the average person.
My only encouragement to you and this board would be, if you're gonna have that discussion, we need to do it sooner than later because any idiot going on, okay? Then I, what you're gonna see next on here is I grouped together those three junior highs, middle school, okay? So they're all there together on the same timeline. And then below that, you'll see some elementary schools that need additions. For example, Longfellow needs an addition, Lemmy still needs an addition, I've got one at Lucas, uh, we didn't add a lot of space at Lucas, uh, they need, they need some help there. And at Wood, we left that for expansion because we figured that southeast side's gonna grow, and that might be your answer, do that first, and, and create some space before you build that new southeast elementary school. Because there's a place at, at Wood where we left for an easy six or eight classroom addition. So that might come, that might come sur, to the surface before the new elementary school is, so that's in there for that reason. At Hoover and Alexandra, I had them on my list too, but they're, they were like buildings that were large enough with their student populations plentiful, that they could use a second art room or a second music room, and those are the kind of additions they needed there, because they have preschool rooms, they have all the other rooms. And the other thing I'll throw out, you know, this whole, I meant to say to my earlier comments, this whole sixth grade move in 24 is gonna dramatically affect how fast we need to build those elementary schools. You need to keep that in mind too, because in theory, we're moving 1,200 kids all at once, and it's gonna create some open classrooms, which is gonna give you some breathing room, which means you may not have to build schools as soon as you want to, or need to. But the downside of all that is the further down the road you build them, the more they cost, so there's a trade-off. And then we have some athletics in here, there's some things that need to be done. Liberty High, we didn't finish the soccer lights, we're gonna have to eventually replace the turf. West High, we're gonna have to replace the turf on football fields because they wear out, they don't last forever. That's a million dollar plus every time we do that. At City High, we have turf on the soccer field that needs to be replaced, and it was replaced in the fall, or was put there in the fall of 2012, they were just finishing when I got here, and it's been 10 years. Those things live, they live 10, 12 years, and the sun gets to them with the wear and tear, but they gotta be replaced. All three schools have turf replacements that need to be done. City High needs a little better athletic entrance plaza, lack of better work, trailer complex. West High, the softball field sits down in a lake, kind of, on certain days, needs to be reworked. Baseball needs to be reworked, it's pretty tough, rough, so things like that are in here that I, that I have. Wine items for playgrounds, technology, and I still have about 10 or 15 different, what I would call district-wide projects, like the physical plant, food service, things like that, that I need to add to this, that I would certainly, will have updated for you for the next meeting, and then we'll be with those principals, and we'll get you a final version for your, hopefully your actual meeting.
Does that include the space or room space?
This space here?
Yes. Upgrades that's needed?
Yeah, so the upgrade part, yeah, it's included, it's, it's kinda in the technology allocation is where we see that, and so that would be one thing I would suggest, you know, when it comes up at our public meeting, or we look for a space there, we can try to reassure people that our ability to do hybrid meetings will be taken care of in the boardroom upgrade that's accounted for in the FMP plan. You're not gonna see a line for it there because it's really through the technology portion.
Okay, that's fine.
So for the, for the playground line, it's gonna be helpful with community relationship wise to do playgrounds more quickly than, than the sat line here. To me, if I was, you know, thinking of my viewpoints from the, for community member, seeing playgrounds go up on elementary schools especially, improve and so forth.
I think my first response to that, Charlie, is that we've, we've approved most of the playgrounds in most of the elementary schools. The purpose of this was to keep up with replacement as they, as they wear out, report to those, those surfaces don't last forever, but, and we've been doing that with pedal, and we've done a pretty good job, I think, with pedal a long way in the last 10 years, I'll tell you that. And, but I think this is kinda going forward, just making sure that we keep it up your part.
So maybe we could, maybe it's do more publicity about what we're, how we're doing at the neighborhood schools, or increasing their effectiveness, their effectiveness for the neighborhood school. And with that playground, things that we've done so far?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that, and we can even come back with a report or, or work session around that, and Ben Grimm and his team have done a tremendous amount of work over the last couple of years, and have really set the standard for playgrounds on the state and across the nation in some ways, and so, Charlie, we, we'd love that. We'd love to come back and share the, share the work that we're doing.
The before and after?
Yeah, I mean, we're really proud, we're really proud of it, and, and I think they have a good plan in place of how we're gonna upgrade and keep doing that, and so I think that's, we'd be really happy to.
Once you get used to that new playground, it's hard to remember what it used to be.
Right.
Yeah, somebody heard me say this before, but, somebody heard me say this before, but I really think Iowa City, we've done such a good job here that we've kinda set the standard for everybody around us, but we really do have some first-class playgrounds.
Because it's Iowa City, I guess it's never good enough.
I know.
Okay.
And the last comment, or question has, I have races every time, or comment action commitment here if you're burning gas into the electric.
Yes, and they're in, not on this list, on the spreadsheet yet, but on my project list, I have my cheat sheet working on, there's still 20 million questions for that.
Okay. Okay, great.
We were on the, we were talking, we like second in July, then early at. I just talked to Chase, we've got some good people to talk to, so.
That was it, do you have questions?
I think the hanging issue out there is kind of Hills, right? And by the time we bring you guys a plan, I, I think I would like to be able to articulate what that plan looks like, or what we think our best solution is for that. And so we may just need to consider, is that some kind of an update on the twenty-second, even if we're not asking for the whole plan to be approved on the twenty-second, we're going to wait till that April meeting. But we'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like and what our options might be. Yeah, I don't, I, I appreciate what Maka said, right, about having some of those issues detailed out, and then knowing what potential solutions are. We have worked on it for a while with them, and I, I think we're probably at the option that is the most realistic, but there, there could be some additional conversations you guys want to have around that. And so we'll try to bring some more information around that next time.
Hey, good thing I said it. Right, if we need to sit down with them again, I mean, I remember that pretty vividly when we sat down with the city council years ago, right, and talked through it, it was like, we need a new school, and she's right, they're like, we'll do whatever it takes to make this happen. And I think the hardship is going to kind of be on us, right? I mean, the, what it's going to take is potentially moving kids around, and that's not something I think any of us really want to do, so I.
Part of that, part of that discussion, Sean, was they wanted a city community center, you know, it's part of that school, remember that? But they've since now secured a space for their city community center. They, they talked about having, they still talk about having a place for adult athletics after hours, having a gym that they could use. And when Chase and Jeff and I met with their city, we told them that that could be done, but they'd probably have to chip in a little bit for the additional cost. So that's something that still needs to be worked out, if they want to do that, you know? Not unlike the gym we built at Alexander or Penn, both ends of town, they're the oversized gyms so adults could use them. Things like that, they still interested in those.
So yeah, I, I would, I guess I would say, if, if you have stuff by the twenty-second, that even if it's just informational, we'll do that. And I do think it's important, just because we did do it with the, the first FMP, to actually make it official and vote on it, right? We can always change it, right? We voted a couple times to change the first one, but I feel better if we get it to a point where we're like, yep, this is, we feel pretty good at the, as the starting point, and the board would take action on it. And if that has to wait till April, I'm fine with that as well, I just think that's an important step we should take. You got like, I'm going to give you one more minute to ask questions. So we have a little break before this. Anything else? All right, Iowa entertained a motion to adjourn. All in favor?